I'd like to call the City of Salem Springs Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March tenth, 2020, to order. Roll call, please.
Song?
Here.
Montgomery?
Here.
Sally?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Calvin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in February eleventh, 2020. You've all received copies in advance. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made? If none, do I have a motion to approve?
All moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signed by a voice vote, yea.
Aye.
Aye.
I screwed it up, didn't I? All those opposed, same sign. They are approved. First item, or the next item, rather, is update to zoning code, Chapter 102. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So we're changing things up slightly on the agenda today and reviewing first an update to the zoning code before you, before covering the development permit approvals. We're doing this because the regulations have a direct impact on the first item of your review under the development permit approval section of today's agenda. So to get everyone up to speed on this update, I'll provide a few words on the background of how we have arrived with the ordinance for your consideration. The drive-through code presented to you is the second phase of a two-part ordinance to address drive-through uses. The Planning Commission reviewed an earlier version of this ordinance on October eighth, 2019. At that time, we did not anticipate that the ordinance would be broken up into two different parts. However, on November fifth, 2019, staff withdrew this ordinance after citizens' concerns were raised regarding the specific impacts drive-through uses have on abutting residential properties. As you may recall, on November eighteenth, 2019, the drive-through code update was presented to the Planning Commission that specifically broke out the special use component to state that if there is a drive-through use that abuts any residential zoning, a special use permit is required. This is what we are calling Phase One. Ultimately, Phase One of that ordinance was approved by the Board of Directors this January and went into effect a month later. So city staff is now ready to present to you the revised Phase Two ordinance. This is the original siting and design standards, what was withdrawn on November fifth. We have made a few modifications that I will cover in the next slide. Because there are some new members on the commission, I will cover again what was in the original ordinance, and then I will touch on the proposed modifications. When we looked deeper into the code specifically for drive-throughs, we found that the definitions were insufficient on how to treat these features and functions of a commercial property. We know that these lanes function differently than driveways due to customers actively queuing and them to acquire food items or services. As a result, we did a survey of other regulations and arrived with the key points that you see listed out in the bullets. We created a definition for drive-through aisle and provided a required service material. I'd like to highlight the third bit bullet in particular, the drive width requirement. We are suggesting a minimum drive width of 12 feet. However, we built in a two-foot allowed reduction to 10 feet in cases where buildings are 20 years or older, which also have limited side space to develop a new drive-through lane and keep the same green space buffer. By permitting the two-foot allowance, we believe this opens up other buildings for this potential use. Staff reviewed the 10-foot width, and it will not cause any additional safety hazards or concerns. We also looked at adding other features such as parking, the pickup windows. These regulations are all detailed in the code attached with the staff memo. The general intent with these rules is to minimize the overall impact these have on surrounding properties by requiring landscaping, limited hours, demarking lanes, et cetera. So when looking at the modify, what we have modified from the earlier version reviewed last fall, we changed to content-based areas. So these are what's been updated since the previous ordinance. We heard concerns voiced at earlier meetings that the noise and light are concerns. To address noise, we increased the maximum distance a speaker system can be from a residential structure from 100 feet to 200 feet in this section that regulates the hours of operations from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The restricted hours are to be applied in cases where speaker systems are less than 200 feet from a residence. This limited hours allows occupants who may need to sleep after 10:00 p.m. to not be disturbed by the automated noise coming from the speakers. By increasing this distance, we believe the noise issue will substantially be less. While there's already screening provision in the city code for commercial properties that abut against residential properties, we decided to add more here to make sure that the screening is solid and opaque so vehicular lights do not shine through the chinks that are often found within wooden fences. We believe these changes will assist in reducing light and sound impacts brought about through the drive-through uses. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance, and we stand by for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this code revision? Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
I'm Carla Wasson, 1004 C. South Mount Olive Street. And I represent Wasson Funeral Home, and we're objecting to the provision in the ordinance that says for existing buildings that are 20 years or older and are 18 feet or less from the side property line where it may be reduced to 10 feet. And the reason for that is it's irrational, for one thing. The age of the building is not a relevant factor in determining whether a building can be retrofitted to accommodate a safe and convenient drive-through. The provision would have entitled Taco Jakes to a development permit as a matter of right had it not been for the ordinance that went into effect making the special use where it abutted a residence. When the, you know, the staff looked over that property, they found that the driveway could not be added safely because of the position, the size and shape of the lot and the position of the building on the lot. So, you know, it would have allowed basically something unsafe in that case. The provision is also discriminatory because there's no reason to treat owners of a building that is less than 20 years old, less favorably than owners of buildings that are 20 years or older, as long as they're in the same zoning and use category. There's no reason for it. And I think it's also biased because the city's intent when they originally proposed this was to allow Taco Jakes to obtain a development permit in spite of the opposition that the neighboring property owners had expressed and in spite of the fact that the variance permit was previously denied. So I think it can be anticipated that if this provision becomes law, that there will be drive-throughs that are dangerous because there's, they have basically a factor that they're using to determine whether you can have one that doesn't have anything to do with how it's going to function. And also, it's, I think you can expect litigation because of the unfairness of the law.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes, please.
Julie Martin. I represent Taco Jakes in this matter, so the address of that business is 403 West Highway 412.
Thank you.
I had before this meeting absolutely prepared a business standpoint for this and arguments against the fact that this is being fought so much. But I have more of a personal standpoint over after what was just said. I have lived in Salem Springs for a long time. I have raised my family here. I have been proud of Salem Springs and the things that we stand for, small businesses, shop local. But the way that this has been handled by the city and by the people who support the city has been absolutely embarrassing as a resident of Salem Springs. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Anyone from the commission have comments or questions? There being none, do I have a motion?
Chairman?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was trying to get my thoughts together in my mind. I have a question for Ben. Ben, I know that staff, this ordinance was not drawn up for one specific property owner, but it's for all. But off the top of your head, do you know of any other building, property that has buildings that this might immediately affect? I think that probably when I was on the Planning Commission before, the, when the original location of Burger King would have probably been affected by this. But do you know of any others?
Well, first off, just to comment on the Burger King, that would not be impacted because it wouldn't be a building that's older than 20 years. The idea here is that we're trying to eliminate future variance requests. When there's a building that has been existing there for so many years, and they only have so much space on the side of their, their property line to work with, we are trying to provide an allowance in those situations, very specific situations, to allow for a drive that is slightly narrower in this specific situations. It's not to try to make it unsafe or not function correctly. All those things would still be looked at through the rest of the drive-through ordinance. It's just saying that rather than being 12 feet, we're going to 10 feet. That's all that that would be doing. So we think that that would help the development process, particularly for retrofits, where you have an older building that needs to be switched over, or they desire to switch it over for a drive-through service.
And your staff feel certain that 10 feet is sufficient. I know a parking space in parking lots is eight feet. That's a tight eight feet. And now you're doing a drive-through with, with movements of cars, and I don't anticipate any doors opening. But the question is, is 10 feet really sufficient?
I met with engineering, and he can comment as well, but we believe that 10 feet would be fine. But I invite engineering up here to comment.
Justin Blanton, City Engineer. Yeah, as far as drive-throughs go, we did a comparison in the area, and, you know, nine foot is actually the standard across the board in Springdale, and then it kind, that's kind of the low end of it. Our minimum parking space is nine foot wide. I, I understand your point. You know, nine foot in a straight line is fine, but when you start turning, that's why, that's why we want to go a little wider on the, you know, and, you know, and the new, new ones where we have the space to do, you obviously want to go up to 12 just to get a little bit more turning area there. But, but yeah, we feel comfortable with 10. That's definitely going to be above the standard that we've seen in the area.
Thank you. Anybody else from the commission wish to question or comment?
My question would be probably for Ben. Sorry, Ben, getting back up, but just a little bit of background maybe on, to address Ms. Wasson's question of, would this be something we would just need to grandfather? I mean, buildings that are older than 20 years, like make it as of? Or is there a reason we wouldn't just, you know, to try to be fair on buildings that are existing versus, you know, say, in 20 years old buildings, just to cut it off at that number?
It's a tricky thing to do. We had to come up with some number because we didn't want new buildings to be built with the 10-foot drive just because everybody now wants a 10-foot aisle.
Maybe it's just as of the date of the ordinance, and I don't, I don't know. I'm saying, is that a thing? Is that commonplace across the board?
Well, again, we're trying to focus on buildings that are existing and ones that are barely older. I think that would eliminate, I guess what I'm just saying is that the newer buildings are already constructed with green space requirements. And so with setback and green space, they're probably not going to have the same issue. It's really the older buildings that tend to be hemmed in a little bit more. But, you know, if they are, if there's not enough space, it doesn't guarantee that they can, they can go to nine or something like that. They would have to then get a variance in those situations.
Don Clark, Community Development Director. Essentially, 20 years ago, the standards were a lot different than where we are today, which is the reason why we feel like we want to allow that allowance because of the standards of what's approved. Things will update over time. But, you know, 20 years ago, what was acceptable, I mean, I'll point out, if for those of you that remember when Taco Tico came, and we had to grant them a variance so they didn't have to really essentially, because today's code, they would have had to go in and cut out a large chunk of their parking lot to install landscaping. Well, you know, it's an older building, need to be retrofitted, which is the reason why we're looking at doing something similar in these circumstances. Because each situation is going to be different, but typically, because the standards were different back then, is the reason why we need to have a little bit of maneuverability, if you will.
Anybody else on the commission have comment or question? There being none, do I have a motion? Ma'am, if you're going to address the commission, I need you to come.
When did the code change? When, because I was just looking at the minimum width requirements, and nothing has happened that's been, hasn't been within 20 years.
I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's more along the lines of what setbacks and green space requirements have changed over the years.
Okay. When did the, when did the green space requirement?
Changed multiple times over history, I would envision. Ben, do you have any guidance?
I don't have an exact date as to what the standards were. It's just a, a guide to say roughly about 20 years ago, standards were different. I would have to do an analysis, determine what the setbacks were in the 90s, 80s, 70s. But it's to say that in the past, in the, in the long past, you know, standards were not the same as they are today. And so that that's the intent of the 20-year provision.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion from the commission?
I'm moved for approval of recommendation of code change.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Motion to recommend code change will go to the Board of Directors for further on April seventh, 2020. Next item on the agenda is special use permit, SU 20-01. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Before you is a special use permit occurring at 403 Highway 412 West. This is the same location that the Board of Adjustment reviewed last August for a green space buffer variance. The present request is to obtain a special use permit for the use of the drive-through service. As you recall from the discussion in the previous agenda item today, the Board recently approved a code change to require special use permits for any drive-through service that abuts a residential zone property. This was that Phase One of the ordinance that I was mentioning. As you can see on the general area map, the northern edge of the property is Zoned R2, thus necessitating the special use permit. Before you is the applicant's final proposal for the drive-through service. Like before, the variance request, the drive-through lane will encircle the building as shown in the pink cars in the picture. The pickup window will be here, so I'm circling. And the applicant has informed the city that there is to be no separate order window. Everything will occur at one stopping point. The applicant is proposing a separate off-site easement, as I'll show right here, to handle the rear parking lot. Vehicles intending to park behind the building will not make use of the drive-through lane to access the parking lot, so the drive-through lane should not be considered as a parking aisle or a drive-through, or is a driveway, excuse me. Here you can see the site. This is looking to the north. Please note the residential structures behind will be directly impacted by the proposed drive-through. The existing angled parking here, as I circle, is proposed to be taken out and converted to an ADA accessible space. And to show you a better view of the site, when looking down, you can better see the rear parking area. And we have also included the approximate location of the property line to the east. So we will now shift into staff's analysis of this project. We wanted to focus on the third approval criterion. It is, it was this one where we felt the proposal presents some disharmony with the intent of the criterion. The criterion refers to the, to if the properties, or excuse me, if the proposed special use has conventionally demonstrated that it will be compatible and respect the context of its location and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So when thinking about a drive-through neighborhood context, rely heavily, heavily on what is occurring in the area to establish a baseline of activity, and then examine if the proposal falls within this baseline or is unique or unusual. So what we looked at for this metric was determine what drive-through uses exist in the immediate vicinity that also abut against residential zone properties. Two others emerged. The first one here, as I circle, is a drive-through for a car wash business. And the second is a drive-through for, I believe, a donut shop right there. The other existing drive-through uses in this area don't touch R-zoned properties, so they're not analyzed due to not being considered true peers with the subject proposal. So in other words, we just want to compare apples to apples. We're measuring from the order window, which is believed to, will generate the majority of the noise. We found that the car wash is 210 feet from the nearest residential structure, and the donut shop is 225 feet away. The current proposal is 168 feet, or 42 feet closer than the highest, next highest distance in the comparables. Therefore, staff finds that the proposed drive-through's proximity to the residential uses unfairly impacts two houses to the north, more so than the others in the area, thus presenting a case for incompatibility when applied with, at this specific location. This is primarily due to the fact that Highway 412 is running west by northwest, where the lots lines here are running essentially at a due west location. So the lots are becoming increasingly more and more shallow due to the highway alignment. And so we can see that evidenced particular here with this residential lot. And I know I've circled a lot, so I'm going to erase some of this. So this residential lot here, being deeper than the others, and yet the distance is 225, where we're only 168 here because of that, that narrowing of the lot, creating a somewhat unique situation there, a pie wedge situation. So moving forward here, this photo is intended to illustrate the difficulty that exists with the existing drives of the proposed aisles in this location. When looking at the fourth approval criteria, we are required to consider if the proposal from its siting, height, design, et cetera, tends to burden the present or future use of neighboring properties. We can clearly see here that the drive here can, cannot work for bi-directional travel. There's simply just not enough space with only seven feet remaining. What I want you to consider, however, is not this particular lane opening because, because the applicant is suggesting that this would be converted into a one-way use for the, or one-way aisle for the driveway service. But rather, what I want you to look at is the distance here, the 16 feet. If you can, please keep that in mind for the next slide. I'll explain further why that's significant. Because the northeast and drive I just showed you is too narrow for bi-directional travel, and you can judge why from the photo, the applicant is required to make other arrangements to allow for vehicles to enter and exit the rear parking lot. What they propose, as I mentioned earlier, is an off-site access easement burdening the property to the east. What the applicant fails to explain is how they intend to handle the vehicles that enter into the neighbor's lot. So as I mentioned, to recall the 16-foot distance as being too narrow for safe two-way traffic, well, the primary drive that connects to this lot to Highway 412 is only 16.5 feet. So it's only six inches wider than the other image I just showed you. So, and staff did measure this in the field and confirmed that, that distance. Therefore, staff briefly analyzed the only logical method to allow both ingress and egress, and that is to require entering vehicles to pass two doors down to the east, then up the rear of the lot, and then work back west behind the building to the parking area, as you see denoted in the red area, arrows. While this arrangement may technically work if the access easements can be obtained from the property owners, staff is unconvinced that this arrangement leads to cogent traffic management or wayfinding scheme for the end user. It further appears to do the very thing the criterion asks not to do, namely to not impact the present or future use of neighboring properties. Vehicles wishing to enter the rear parking lot can alternative, or cannot alternatively use the drive-through aisle due to the proposed code, and that's what you just reviewed, requiring 100-foot buffer from the drive-up window to the closest parking lane or driveway. So in other words, they cannot use this to get back in there because the distance from here to here prohibits that. The final area of concern I'd like to touch on is the lighting for the site. As you can see in the photo documentation of how the neighborhood residential lots are impacted by the business's lighting. We determined that the lighting was stalled sometime in 2018, and we believe as part of the, a business remodel when the restaurant originally opened up. While the applicant did verbally confirm that he will be doing some kind of treatment on the fence to limit light intrusion, his intentions were not formalized in the final plans of middle. Staff believes this falls short in conveying a plan for the residential impacts as presented in the site plan. If the commission desires to recommend approval of the special use permit, staff is suggesting that the applicant address the future generated lights from the drive, from drive-through vehicles. As you can see in the picture, the fence has openings that allow for light penetration, and furthermore, that the parking lot lighting be made to comply with the city codes that would be, that were in effect when the lighting was installed. Those codes went in, in 2017. In summary, staff has three primary concerns with this proposal. First, that it fails to fit within the neighborhood context. Secondly, the off-site traffic ingress and egress is confusing and not practical, not a practicable solution. And finally, that the plan has failed to adequately address lighting trespass. For these reasons, staff is recommending denial of this request. Finally, I did want to point out that we did receive a phone call, the questioning nature- Finally, I did want to point out that we did receive a phone call, the question nature on what was going on after the staff report went out, and staff has explained to the caller what the project was about. With that, we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission? Could you again state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes?
Julie Martin with Taco Jake's, 403 Highway 412 West. All but the traffic flow can absolutely be resolved here. The lighting, we're willing to put up a fence to keep it. We're willing to take that big light down. That's the only one that floods over. The noise, there's not a drive-through speaker involved here. It would be ordering at the window, the same as the business next door already has a functioning drive-through. I feel that there has been things pulled basically out of the air to avoid this from happening. And in a prior conversation with those who are fighting it, we were all so told, we simply don't want it. Therefore, it is never going to happen. We're willing to work with the people that it's neighboring. The last thing we want to do is keep lights in people's windows, or keep them up at night. Trust me, I like to go to bed early, too. I run two restaurants. I have to have my sleep. And we don't want to do that to people. I've lived right in town. We don't want to do that. But just let us know what we need to do to accommodate, and we're willing to do it, instead of handling it in this manner.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the commission? There being none, I'll call it into public comment time. Anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding this proposal?
Just so we're clear, if this variance was approved, this would put them within one foot of the property line on the west. Is that correct? Ben?
Had the variance been approved, that would have been the case, yes.
One foot, twelve inches, okay.
Ben, while you're up here, just make sure that I didn't misunderstand something. They would need two access easements from the two neighboring properties in order to make this compliant.
In staff's opinion, yes, mainly because of that 16.5 feet that really, really limits what you can do, and because that's basically half the parking needed for the business. You know, cars are going to be leaving and coming in at the same time, and so you need to have, accommodate that space, and to rely on the drive-through lane. To do that is a wholesale violation of the proposed 100, well, now going to the board of directors, but the, what you recommended for approval for the first agenda item, which was that there has to be 100-foot buffer from the drive-through window to the next nearest driveway or parking aisle or lane. And so it just doesn't pencil out. Like I said, you know, it technically would work if they did require the easements, but it just is, you know, you have to kind of look at the bigger picture sometimes. Does it really make sense, you know, for people to try to be explained to go almost to the two other businesses down the road to be able to get back to the rear parking lot of the business? So, but yes, to answer your question, absolutely, this is one lot here. That would be access easement one, and access easement two would be for that lot.
Thank you. Anyone else from the commission have question or comment?
On that property there, is the rear parking the only parking that is available? Is there no parking out front?
There is parking out front. However, their size of their restaurant, I believe 1,200 square feet, requires additional parking in the rear.
So there's just insufficient parking out front?
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? There being none, do I have a motion on this proposal? Special Use 20-01.
I move for denial, Special Use 2001.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. This has gotten a little confusing in the past, so I want to make sure and tap our attorney a little bit to make sure I get it right. The motion and second is to deny this proposal. So if you wish to deny this request, you will vote in the affirmative. Is that correct?
Yes, since the motion is to deny, a yes vote is against the approval, and a no vote is for the approval.
Good. Roll call, please.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
You know, I'm just not comfortable with the proposal as it sits today, not adversely impacting not one, but two property owners, so I will have to vote yes to deny the permit or the request.
Song?
And I really appreciate Ms. Martin's comment, but I also am concerned about the traffic, so yes.
Motion to deny carries, and will go to the board of directors on April 7th of 2020. Next item on the agenda is special use permit 20-02 for 300 block of North Progress Avenue. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you again, and Mr. Chairman and Commission. First, your second review item, you're looking at another special use development permit for Lycan's Pharmacy. This is located at 310 North Progress Avenue. If this project looks familiar to you, you're correct. This significant development project was reviewed by the commission last November, and was ultimately approved by the board of directors on December 3rd, 2019. So here is the site plan showing the proposed structure of the pharmacy we located on the east side of the, of the building, right there. The reason why this special use permit is needed is because under the zoning code, a pharmacy uses are lumped in with medical marijuana sales and dispensaries. When the state approved the sale of medicinal medical marijuana, we classified this activity with pharmacy uses and created a special use unit, that's 16.1, which is only permitted by special use permit in commercial zones. So in other words, pharmacies are not a use by right in our zoning. And so we understand that this site will not be used as a dispensary for medical marijuana or anything like that. This is just going to be a regular pharmacy. So this is the first pharmacy that has come into asylum springs since enacting that, that rule. So here is the drone view. You're looking at the site. This is looking to the north. Progress Avenue is on the right. The site has not started construction yet, and we believe that they're waiting until final approval of this permit before starting. We do not see any impacts that the neighboring uses brought about strictly from the pharmacy use on its face, as it will primarily be a retail use similar to what already exists in the area. Staff is recommending approval of no conditions, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission?
Just Ron Homer, Civil Engineering, 701 South Mountain. I'm just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this project? Being none, I'll call into public comment period. Anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding this proposal? There being none, do I have a motion for Special Use 20-02?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Special Use 20-02.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion to approve Special Use 2002 carries, and will go to the board of directors, April 7th, 2020. Next item on the agenda is final plat development permit, FP 20-01, 3897 East Kenwood. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Transitioning now to final plats, for your consideration is a final plat occurring at the Ridgestone duplex subdivision. This is occurring at 3897 East Kenwood Street. This is the first final plat for the three recent plumery plats approved along East Kenwood. Due to the rectangular size of the property, the applicant has broken the plat into two parts. What you're looking at here is the southern half of the project, with Kenwood on the south here. You will note that large detention areas are shown here and here, and that's needed because the site is quite flat, and so additional detention is needed for the project. And here you see the northern half of the same subdivision. There's a planned street connection to Timothy here. The connection requires that the property owner to the west agrees to dedicate the needed right-of-way for the street, as it will pass off to the subject property. This agreement is done, but the exact timing that the street will be finished is not known at this time. Therefore, staff is suggesting a plat note that matches the approved condition from the plumery plat that states that the lots here will, cannot be built on until that street connection is finished, and that plat note has been added. And here you can see the full project showing the, both the southern and northern areas I just presented. And this is the site looking to the north. As you will see in the staff suggested conditions, the applicant has offered an irrevocable letter of credit to complete any unfinished work. That would go happen after approval at the board of directors. The current status of the subdivision is further along than the photo. This was taken a little more than a month ago. Presently, asphalt is down on two, three of the streets, and utilities are in. They still need to pour sidewalks and finish the detention ponds. We estimate about three to four weeks approximately to complete the addition, weather permitting. The first condition on the report has been met at this point. We do have that letter. The second condition covers the construction of vertical structures associated with the future building permits. Authorization needs to be given by the fire marshal to ensure that the proper emergency access is available to the structures if there's a fire or something. This is needed because they're using the letter of credit to finalize the addition prior to its completion. The second and third conditions are both standard for final plats, and staff is recommending approval with the stated conditions, and we are available for any newer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission on this proposal? Please state your name and address.
My name is Ally Carr. I'm with Crafton Toll. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this project? There being none, I'll call into public comment period. Anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding this proposal? My only question was, Ben, the wet basins, do we have other developments that have used that before?
I believe we do. I can't name them off right now, but I do believe they have been used in the past.
You know, what types of screening or fence, would it just be a fence?
I believe a fence, yeah. I'm getting the nod of yes from Justin, yeah. So as far as the safety measures, yeah, yeah.
Just wondered.
Yeah.
Pretty reasonable, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Make a motion to approve FP 20-01?
You have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McKinney?
Aye.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries, and will go to the board of directors on March 17th of 2020. Next item on the agenda is final plat development permit, FP 2002, 21400 block of Davidson Road. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. For your final, for your, for your final current planning permit, you're looking at a final plat that's at 21400 block of Davidson Road. This is the first time this has been presented to the commission, so there are no associated plumery plats with this permit. And that's because the applicant is requesting to split the property into five lots with access from existing county roads and an access easement, so no infrastructure is proposed as part of the plat. Here you see the five lots proposed. Davidson Road is to the south of Shady Grove Road to the north. Lot two here will have the proposed access from cozy corners with a 30-foot wide access easement there, and those are prevented by code. Here is the site. This is, of course, looking to the north. I've labeled each lot for clarity, and probably to show how the layout will be. Staff is not aware of any future development plans on these lots. Each will have their own septic system and well, because there's no water sewer services in this area. Staff is recommending approval with standard condition on returning file copy within 45 days, and we did receive another call of a question nature that came in yesterday, just wondering what was going on. We let them know. And with that, we're recommending approval and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission regarding this project?
Tim West with Atlas Land Surveying. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission regarding final plat 2002? There being none, I'll call into public comment period. Anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding this proposal? There being none, do I have a motion for final plat 2002?
I move to approve for approval of final plat 20-02 with the following, subject to the following condition. As stated, the applicant must file this plat with the Benton County Circuit Clerk's Office and provide two copies to the city within 45 days of board acceptance of this plat.
You have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries, and will go to the board of directors on April 7th of 2020. Next item on the agenda is master street plan update.
Thank you, Justin Blansett, engineer. Let me pull this open real quick. So what you guys have here is a revision to the master street plan, and then the bulk of it has to do with the, the street fee structure. And the reason that we wanted to do this is currently what we have is just kind of complicated, and it's really inequitable. We end up with varying fees being paid for similar developments across the city. So this is the, the current formula. So this is the the current formula we have. And kind of in a nutshell, the idea is if your development is going to create traffic. So if it's say if you're going to add fifty percent of what the roadway capacity is, you'd be responsible to pay fifty percent of the the upgrade cost of the road. But then that it's also that times that distance back to where the the street would be what we would consider as a standard street that would meet our master street plan cross section. This is not like something that's really easily to put together and particularly if you know a developer is looking to come in to town and just kind of look at a property, it's very difficult to give them an accurate answer on the front end. So so our administrator's task is to try and come up with a different way to to approach this. And furthermore, some of the issues that we have right now with it are that, well, this is what we have right here is that it does. The idea behind it is that it kind of discourages urban sprawl, the further away you are down a, you know, an undeveloped road, the more you theoretically have to pay. But because of state laws, there are some exemptions that we have to abide by, one being that we can't collect fees if it's onto a city street that's been existed more than seven years. We also don't collect fees if it connects to a state or county roadway. And then we get into some of these really kind of outlier situations where the developments on a road that is either the center line might be the city limits or like out on East Kenwood Street where the full Kenwood Street's in the in the county proportions, then it goes in the city proportions, it goes back in the county. So it just gets complicated because then you're you're mixing a city and county funding and you know, it's just it's just kind of a headache. And there there anyways, there are a lot of questions that have come up over the years on this and it's difficult to be very make this very standardized. So for instance, some of the just some of the recent ones we had over the last three or four years, the Shadowlands subdivision, which was a twenty acre tract of land at the corner of Oak Crest and Dawn Hill. It was a seven lot subdivision, they were they were large lots, but the street fee had been about twenty three hundred dollars per lot. And that was primarily because it it had to be addressed for a mile of Dawn Hill Road all the way back down to where it intersected with Mount Olive. And then not too far away, the first phase of Stone Ridge, the the street fees were about ten thousand dollars for for thirty lots. So I think that's about three hundred and thirty dollars a lot there. However, the second phase of Stone Ridge, they didn't have to pay any street fees because at that time it had been over seven years since Highco Street had been improved. So it was no no longer eligible for for the city to collect that. So three developments there in fairly same part of town, there was a there's a really wide gamut of what we saw there. And then when you start looking at, you know, industrial development, we don't have a lot of comparison, you know, the Simmons plant, there was about eleven thousand dollar fee for an eighty six thousand square foot building. The Gunners Edition, here's another example, one off of Country Club Road where the city had improved that street more than seven years ago, so they they weren't eligible for street fees. And then of course, the a lot of the commercial development we see out on four twelve isn't eligible for street fees currently because it it fronts onto a state highway. So so the idea here is just that, you know, kind of levelize this a little bit and make it more equitable across the board. So when we kind of step back and look at this, we're just we had a couple of things we wanted to do. One is just to take the city as a whole and not look at the the roadway network as as a whole and not look at just the individual trip in like the legs, which is kind of what's this current system is based off of. And then we're also just trying to make it simple, that way if, you know, someone wants to come in and, you know, ask us questions, we can just tell them an exact answer right away without having any any sort of uncertainty. So to do this, we came up with a couple deals, we basically had a fee calculation. You know, if you're looking at our master street plan, what does it cost to build out all of our collector and arterial streets? And then we also looked at the number of trips, if the the system was fully built out, like how many trips per day would the, you know, the full system accommodate? So on the fee side, just within city limits here, we have about twenty four miles of collector and arterial streets. And, you know, I calculated about sixty two million dollars to bring those all up to the existing master street plan standards. That's, you know, it's difficult to do an exact number and of course that doesn't consider any interest or appreciation. So that that's a good solid number for for the time being. We then looked at the a couple of different things, the zoning map for the existing areas within city limits and then also kind of cross reference that with the future land use plat. Because for instance, if areas are currently agricultural, you know, eventually they'd probably be maybe a subdivision, so we knew there'd be more of a traffic load. But but doing this, we were able to say, there's a big portion here of this is the developed area within town. We actually had our GIS technician go through lot by lot, figure out what kind of use we had and calculate the number of trips that is currently in place. And then we took all the undeveloped lots and did the same thing based upon either the existing zoning or the future land use plat. We came out about two point four million trips per day that the total the system would eventually in the future accommodate. So with those two numbers, sixty two million divided by the two point four million, it comes out to about twenty five dollars sixty four cents per trip. So the cool thing about that is that there are some manuals that are printed by the Institute of Traffic Engineers that have nationwide averages for different types of developments, but it tells you on average, you know, per household or per thousand foot of commercial development, what kind of traffic impact you're going to have. So we can take this number, just look at that up in the book and then calculate a street fee, just just like that. So for instance, single family residence, they say nine point five seven trips per day, that comes out to two hundred forty five dollars and thirty seven cents. For multi-family, you know, like an apartment or triplex duplex, the expected traffic impact is a little less, so it would be a hundred and sixty nine dollars and ninety nine cents and and so on as you get down here, retail, commercial. Fast food, this is one that has a lot of traffic impact. But one thing that we did discuss with staff is that with it being on four twelve, there's a couple of things going on. One, a lot of those trip ins aren't the primary trip in, so if you're, you know, maybe maybe you're going to Walmart, but you're stopping to get gas on the way back or or, you know, you stop and get, you know, dinner at a fast food place on the way back. So there, sometimes these aren't the 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 primary driver. Secondly, there's a lot of traffic on four twelve that is maybe driving from Spring to Tulsa. They're just stopping to get gas or fast food or whatnot. They never actually leave the state highway system and actually have an impact on the the local network. So to do that, the actual the traffic manuals actually give a discount of up to fifty percent on that traffic created. So so staff can have a little bit of leeway here if we get a new fast food restaurant on four twelve, such that the fees aren't, you know, so high in in that regard. So this table here just kind of shows some of the past projects we've had with a new fee and then an old fee were applicable. So so for instance, on that Simmons warehouse, there is a the new fee would be about fifteen point four thousand fifteen thousand four hundred dollars. The old fee is eleven thousand, so it's not not a huge difference there percentage wise. But you can see the commercial developments that previously did not have to pay, there would be, you know, a fee ranging, you know, from, you know, four to ten thousand dollars on some of those developments. And then as you kind of get further down, you can just see the some of the subdivisions and whatnot. So overall, the the developments that we're actually paying before, it's not going to be a huge difference. It's just that now we're kind of applying this fairly across the board to all developments. And then just just for curiosity curiosity sake, here's a couple of numbers based on the building permits that we had in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, what this fee would generate yearly. So in twenty eighteen, you know, it would have been about just a little under thirty two thousand dollars. In twenty nineteen, we had a lot more commercial development, which drove that number up to just a little bit over eighty seven thousand dollars. And I think I missed a slide in here, but the the other part of the change is that in addition to the street impact fee, we will start requiring the developments to improve the frontage of the development when they do the work. Currently, that's kind of always been figured into the street fee itself, but now, so if, you know, if you build on a collector street from the center line over, we'd expect you to build that what that half of the street would look like. So that'd be storm sewer, curb and gutter and sidewalk at that time as well. And then it is just a couple of the changes that we made as part of this. One is that we added official definitions for sidewalk and side path. We've used side path a lot recently because it kind of is, you know, technically it's it's illegal to ride your bicycle on a sidewalk in in town. So we've went to the side path, which is a wider one, it's bidirectional, but that's just the designation we wanted to use where we're encouraging bicycles to get off the road and onto the the side path. So this kind of makes that official. We made some changes to the design standards, the geometric design standards on the different types of roadways. These are actually kind of put everything back to the previous revision of the master street plan. This last go around, a lot of the design speeds for the streets were raised and that has basically made streets that people can drive faster on and, you know, in my opinion, it's beyond what the speed limits are that we're actually seeing in town. So I I think it encourages people to speed and it also makes it a little more safe. But the flip side is it also makes it a little more challenging when you're doing development because you have to accommodate these huge horizontal radius curves. Sometimes it's hard to fit that on a piece of property, so so these are some things that we did just to kind of roll that back to a previous version of the plan. And then the last change was that on the actual map itself, we decided to, if you can see right here, this is Simon Sager. This section right here is actually built. So we basically just decided to adjust this line to actually show the the corridor that's actually been built. So previously, if you can draw a straight line here, this basically went straight through. So we basically just updated the map to kind of show that corridor where it's actually at. And with that, staff recommends approval and is available for any questions.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have comment regarding the master street plan update? Being none, I'll call into public comment. Anyone from the commission have questions, comments, concerns regarding?
A quick question, so Justin, you said you can give a discount up to fifty percent, how do you determine what percentage?
Well, there is a little bit of guidance in the in the I T E manual and some of that's just going to have to be anecdotal based upon what we expect in certain locations. You might see more of a bypass on four twelve than you would if there was a commercial business on Syria Whitlock, for instance. So some of the things things we're just going to have to work out of staff. Thanks.
Justin. Final impact says that this will change the street structure fee. Bottom line, is this going to cost developers more or less when they come in to develop?
Well, it depends on what where you develop. So if if you're developing on four twelve, currently the fees don't apply because that's just how our system's set up. But it.
In the future, they will apply, okay.
That's correct. Now, and then the flip side is if if you have a subdivision that you're wanting to build on the outer edge of town, it's probably going to be less expensive because you're not having to pay for the the fees for that long road in. So it's going to vary, but I think across the board, it's going to kind of average out though.
Any further comments from the commission or questions? I think it's an effort to create transparency for the developers and I appreciate that, I think your development community will too. Further questions or comments from the commission? There being none, do I have a motion regarding the master street plan update?
I move to approve the master plan street update.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Colvin.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion recommending approval goes to the Board of Directors on March seventeenth of 2020. Being the end of the agenda, any of the commissioners have additional comments on anything?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we adjourn.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say yes?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.